All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order and do roll call when you're ready.
Barkle.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Right, so we have a quorum. Everybody got a chance to go over the minutes? There isn't any changes, need a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Looking over the agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda change?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Second to approve the agenda. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, conflict of interest declarations, we can start with Kathy.
No.
I have, I'll recuse myself on the second topic. That's my family.
Okay.
They'll come back.
All right, Chris Barkle, no?
Dan Kettering, no.
Lauren Nelson, no.
All right, so now we've got a few minutes to go until the first agenda item start. Now, since we we have first public comment. Sure, we could do a public comment right now, come on up and state your name.
Hi, my name is Andrea Lanning, I'm involved in 30392445 Avenue. And my
Would you pull it down just a little bit there, thank you.
Do you need my name again?
Yeah.
Andrea Lanning, Volin, South Dakota.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know Bill, I've worked with him on this particular problem, I'm, my purpose here today is to ask the zoning office to enforce our policies that are on the website that have been approved by the county, I'm new to the area, I grew up in Volin, but I've been away for forty years. I came back and bought the family farm and there's an adjacent abandoned trailer on the, on the property next to me. And, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, I've been gone forty years, I don't know the politics, I don't know the relationships in the commission or with, you know, people that have lived there for fifty years, I only know what's on your website, I only know what it says, and so I'm just asking you to enforce it. I made a nuisance abatement complaint on October thirteenth about an abandoned trailer. It, its lid blew off, the roof blew off the week before in a terrible storm. And your policy stays the thirty, thirty days to comply, and so debris and insulation were flying out of this thing into the field next to me, onto my property. By November twenty-three, I hadn't heard anything, so I called the zoning office and was told they worked out a deal with the owner and they gave an extension till the end of the June, well, that's eight months. In April, tin started tearing off in the high winds, so I called and emailed the zoning office, I started talking to Rob Clemish as well, who's a delight to work with, really. May third, my conversation with Rob, again, the owner told him that the trailer will be gone by June first. So, by May thirtieth, the owner hired someone to put orange fencing over the top of the trailer, well, this isn't going to stop the tin from tearing off the side of it. And we had those really strong sustained winds. In June, Gary came out to the place and visited and observed it and agreed that it was still a mess. But then the next day he called and said that the owner's going to build a shed from the materials on the trailer. Well, this is, the owner is seventy-nine years old, and this is just going to cause more debris. And so my question is, when will the tin continue to tear off, go airborne, damage my home, my vehicles, my trees, my animals? When does disaster happen, and this whole time, I'm just following policy, I'm just doing what the website said to do, I made the phone calls, I filled out the forms, everything was approved. And yet, all this leeway is going on, and so, so then my next question is, if she's gonna build a shed out of it, is a permit required for that? Does the adjacent, the property line distances have to apply to that? I have a picture of it, if you want to, if you want to see a picture of it, the property. You can see the, the trailer, I put an arrow pointing to the trailer, and then I'm just a property above that, I'm just three and a half acres. So again, my only goal is to ask, just, will you just enforce the policy you have on the books? Because this isn't going to get better, it's only going to get worse, I can follow up with another nuisance abatement complaint. But I'm just asking for some intervention, so, and that is do I wait for questions?
I guess, let's take a look at this quick. I guess, Bill, do you have anything to add to it, can you give us an update of what's going on, on your end?
We received the original complaint, Gary sent out a letter certified. The owner came in and spoke to him, it was turned over to the state's attorney, they worked out some kind of agreement. The planning and zoning office doesn't have the authority to force anything, that's the state's attorney's responsibility. If, if the person doesn't comply, then they have to request or demand that it be taken care of by the county, that's beyond our authority. So, we've, we've talked to Rob several times, it's up to Rob to do it, you know, we, like I said, we can't, we can't call somebody and say, do it, the state's attorney has to do that. And so we've, we've contacted Rob several times and
Do you know where he's at with it?
He gave her a deadline and he couldn't remember what the deadline was. But he's got, he's, he's the one that's made the deadline and he's the one that's got to enforce it. Because all we can do is turn it over to him when it gets to that point. So, we can inquire again tomorrow and let him know that someone was here asking about it. So, I just wanted to make sure, it was, it's not our sitting on it, not doing anything, we did, we followed the process to what we could, and now it's out of our hands. So, but to answer your question, if she wants to build something, yes, she has to meet her setbacks and all of that, and we wouldn't yeah, so we wouldn't issue a per, unless it's hundred and twenty square feet or smaller. But if it's bigger than that, she would have to, and she'd have to meet setbacks and pay the, the permit fee and all of that.
So then when, when he really starts flying in, why just start up the
I would send another one, so we can send it to Rob and let him know that he's got to get out of it. And I feel for you, but like I said, if we can't, we have no authority to enforce that, that's state's attorney's responsibility.
Because if he told me by July first, you'd have it built, July twelfth, then nothing happens, so she'd be in slow life.
So we can contact Rob again tomorrow and let him know, and see if he can give us a direct answer, and then I can email. You, you are the chair and coach, or I'll email you and let you know where it's at.
Right.
It's okay.
We can go from there.
Make a motion of some kind, as far as to enforce it, with the recommendation that
I believe in public comment, we're not supposed to respond to any comments, so I think we've done all we can do at this time in this meeting.
All right, since they allowed that public comment, is there any final ones before we start on the first agenda item? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the first agenda item. Tachek, conditional use permit, applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an addition to an accessory structure that is over twenty-four hundred square feet. Maximum per Article seven, section seven oh seven. Applicant wishes to add an additional two thousand square feet to an existing forty-four hundred square foot building. Said property is legally described as the south half of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter. Except lot N one and tract a section thirteen township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west. The fifth PM Yankton County, South Dakota, E nine one one, address is two six three, needs to have Yankton, South Dakota. All right, Keith, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about it?
Good evening. Keith Tachek, two sixty-three Neest, and want to add a couple thousand feet to an existing building, it'll be for cold storage for parking equipment and vehicles that are sitting outside getting beat up by the sun and rain and I just want to put a James Steel building right on to the existing one that I've got. The existing building is a pole barn, but I'm going to go with a James Steel, see which one's tougher in a windstorm, I guess.
Do you currently have a conditional use permit for the current building, or was that pre-zoning?
No, there was a conditional use permit for that.
Okay.
Because it's got sixteen foot sidewalls. And I wanted to have a big door, so I could get big stuff in there. This building can only be seen from either Google Earth or flying over, you can't see it from any road anywhere, so it's buried back in the, in the boondocks.
And you use, this is for a business you've been conducting out there.
Yeah, my, my construction company has been based out of there for thirty years, but now ninety-nine percent of my equipment and operations are out of a facility I have on I twenty-nine up in Lincoln County. So I pretty much quit running crews out here, except if I have to, if they're in town and I have to fix a machine, we'll use that shop, but I just turned sixty-five yesterday, so my days of running a crew are pretty much over. I hope.
I see by the thing now, on this new addition you're requesting, that is the sidewall fourteen foot on that?
Yeah, it'll be fourteen foot. It's just for tractors and bobcats and vehicles.
And you said cold storage, but it's, it's going to be enclosed, it's just
It's going to be enclosed, and I'm going to insulate it just to keep it from being a hundred degrees in the summer and but the rest of the other building is heated and cooled, and that's the shop space, and this is just going to be storage to keep, clean the place up and put equipment in.
I suppose all the access and the utilities and all that stuff's pretty much going to stay the same, you're just adding on to
Yeah, I just, for as far as utilities, they've just got a bunch of hole through the wall for lights, and that's all there is, there's no sewer water or anything going in.
Any responses from any of the neighboring properties?
The one drawing that you sent out, Bill, on it, and it's probably just the way it played out, but it looks that the the walls isn't square.
Edition?
Yeah, it's not this much, so, one of the other ones down further.
It's in the back.
Or you want
You had, you had the blue
Blue lines.
The blue line draw gone out to where the, the new proposed structure would go.
Well, that's
Yeah, right there.
So, this building sits in an angle, so to make it meet the setbacks, it can't be exactly square, is that correct? Or, and the lines are hand drawn too, so.
Okay, yeah, I just, and, because it looked, it looked like, okay, you're going to start out with a, what, fifty or seventy foot wide building and you're going to chop it down to a fifty foot
No, he's just showing that he's going to meet the setbacks.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, the land of the west, I'm dealing on it, I'm going to be buying that land that's off to the left, so that's going to be mine shortly.
All right, is there any other questions for Keith? All right, thanks.
Okay. Thanks.
Um, let's see, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak on this conditional use permit? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this topic. Bill, on the conditional use permit in the past, was there any conditions put on or? I guess, to me, it looks like it meets the setbacks and
Yeah.
It's just adding on to an existing building.
The only problem I ever have with a lot of these is the fact that we've rewritten the size of buildings could be, and then they've got a big building and, and you know, you're doubling, basically almost doubling the size of the building, or a third more, again. And what's allowed, but then we had to look at the fact that where it's located, it's not you know, next to somebody else's development or whatever, so.
Yeah, I guess I don't see any problems within hearing none from any of the neighboring properties.
You said you were buying some of the property adjacent to you?
Yeah.
How many acres is that?
It's going to be about eight, eight or ten.
Okay. I'd move approvals of the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, whenever you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Next agenda item is Pugsley Conditional Use Permit, applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a kennel and dog boarding facility with less than twenty dogs in an agricultural district per Article five, section five oh seven. Said property is legally described as the northwest quarter, including lots A and C of Michael's addition, as per plat recorded in book S thirteen, page one oh one, and the north half of the southwest quarter, all in section ten. Township ninety-four north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. Nine one one address is three zero four two eight, or thirty-seventh Ave, Yankton, South Dakota. Right.
I'm Dennis Michael, three zero four two eight, four hundred and thirty-seventh Avenue, this is my farm. Colin is my son-in-law, this is his wife, my daughter Casey. They just took up new address in Yankton today, yesterday. Moved back from Rapid City to this area, Colin's still out there working at, but he's, he'll be coming back later, this little bit later this summer. Casey's here now to get kind of squared away on the house and her new job, so. What they're wanting to do, Colin's passion is training bird dogs and working with dogs, they've got a couple dogs of their own and, and he wants to be able to start a business to house, you know, or board dogs for people when they're going out of town and do some obedience training and some bird dog training on that. This sets in a area on my farm that's accessible, right off of the main driveway there, the picture doesn't really show it the best, but there's a big grain bin there. It will be to the south and west of that grain between there and the shelter belt, so it's really hidden from view from any place, other than right in the yard there. If you go through the handout that I gave you, on the front page, of course, is what the operational plan for the, the kennel will be. And then the pictures next are, the, the building is actually a portable building, it's built in Pennsylvania. And then when they, they ship it out here and set it down on your prepared site. What you can see on there, it has indoor, it's heated, air-conditioned. It's really easy to clean. They have a sleeping area, which is like the four by four box for the dog, and then there's a little four by six run that they can get out and get some air. And then the intent is, is once it's got sat down there, they're going to put a perimeter fence to the east side of that building, so the dogs can get out and actually run in the dirt and that would be, I think, the last we talked about it anyway, was about sixty feet by the width of the building, is sixty feet, so it'd be sixty to eighty feet long. But it'll be a fence that the dogs can't escape from, it's a, and then enclosed enough, because we talked about different types of fences to put up, but he's had the experience where if it wasn't, if it wasn't over eight feet tall, they, they'd find their way out of there if they had to, some of the dog can really jump pretty high, so. But his passion is to be able to board these dogs and take care of them. There is quite a, I did not, was not aware of it, but visiting with some friends of mine that have dogs that have to board them, it's a pretty good business to be in. Once you get established and get out there, because people either camping down at the lake or just living here and wanting to go on vacation and not wanting to take the dogs. It'd be a great place to go, you can see by the, the handout, the facility is really well constructed. This building has, you know, shows the wind loads and all that stuff on the building, on the prints and stuff like that, some of the other ones have shingles, the smaller buildings have shingles, but this has an actual metal roof, just a forty-year paint warranty, which doesn't necessarily mean anything, but it'll be a metal building, a metal roof on the building, and it's all finished and ready to sit down on the, the site that you prepare for. And then it runs, then you'll run electricity and water to it. He's going to put the security system in, will be based off the cloud, so there's security cameras that watches both inside the, the kennel and outside to see the traffic coming in and out. To be able to go in there and, you know, you'll have to be able to drop your dog by appointment or, you know, arrangements made and just can't come and go as, as you please. We're, you know, it's, it's back off the road quite a ways. There's another house in between, Casey's mom lives in that house, and then the farmyard's down below that, so this was kind of the ultimate spot to put it, because it's away from the farmyard, so you don't have to worry about what I'm doing down there as far as feeding cattle and stuff like that, and then they can access to, to the site. We'll put a driveway in right off of the, the driveway going in, there's the water supply, electric, electricity is right there. And then we'll put a, a small septic system in behind it to catch all the water and runoff and anything that would go down into the drains in the building with a drain field and stuff like that, but it's, most of the water is going to go in there, it'd be washing water and, you know, urine or something like that, but most of the rest will be cleaned by hand, and then he'll, he's lining up a dumpster service to come in and, and clean up, you know, the hallway, all the trash, dog food bags and things like that. Um. Like I said, his hope is to be up and running by mid-September to mid-October, it's going to depend a little bit on, once he gets through the zoning process. They, the company had notified him that they were kind of ahead of schedule a little bit as far as being able to build originally, and when we started talking to him, it was going to be November, December, and it's pretty hard to dig water lines and stuff in November, December, a lot of years, so, so it's coming on a little faster. They, every, you know, they'll have waiver forms for themselves and the dogs. He's looked at a couple of different plans as far as fencing. What to put out there that's aesthetically nice looking, but yet will keep the dogs in the, in there. And the other thing is, because of the shelter belt, the way it's around there and stuff like that, any sound would really muffle from everything that's around it, so our closest neighbors, quarter mile away are better already anyway, so. Do you have any questions?
I guess looks like you covered pretty much everything in the list, any input from any other property owners?
Nothing, I have heard nothing. You're, you're, you're the quarter mile.
I guess my only concern was maybe at night when the dog's working.
And they will be, they will be in the kennels, in the barn at night, so, or in the
So, we're, yeah, so, yeah, and we're only, we're hoping to have around twelve, so it's not a lot, and then that was not their intention, there won't be something else, that's, that's what we're about.
You've, you've been at the house, so you know basically where it's, you know, it's going to set, but like I say, the, the dogs will not be allowed to roam outside at night, they'll be in, and of course, it's well insulated, there's ventilation fans and stuff like that, it's heated and air conditioning and everything, so, and then they'll have wash machine and dryer in there for washing blankets and towels and stuff like that, so that they can keep the place clean, so.
Most customers will come from the south?
Pardon me?
Most customers will drive in from the south.
Well, and that
I'm thinking
Casey, Casey, come up here.
Hi, I'm Casey Michael, the wife. Yeah, so, one of the things that we had talked about was doing pickup in town. So then, when things kind of get up and running, to either have a vehicle or something like that, so where we can, you know, transport and stuff like that. Or, yeah, just having people come from the south too.
And that was something that we talked about too, was because of its location out in the country like that, and it's not easily seen like from three oh four. The asphalt road there, that at some point, they'd probably come in for sign permit to get signage out on my pasture right there to kind of, some arrows, we won't paint yellow stripes like the tractor just did, with the dogs this way, but but that's, that's down the road, right, you know, once we get to the point of being able to actually move on it, then we'll have to kind of decide where you want to do signage at the end of the driveway. You know, and his biggest, Colin, and visiting with him, was to make sure that when they get down the driveway, that they know to go to the north there, the building will be sitting there, it should be well visible, it's just the fact that more signs you put up and sometimes you're still missing.
Any more questions? All right, thanks. Is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak on this? You wanted to come up and restate anything you were concerned about, or you're good? Okay, all right, seeing none, other than I will close the public comment. You haven't heard anything, Bill?
No.
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit.
Second.
Right, I have a motion in the second, is there any further discussion, or are you ready to vote? All right, we can vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael. Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Michael abstains.
Right, so, motion passed. Next agenda item is the Paulson Rezone. Applicant is requesting to rezone the following properties from moderate density residential to agricultural district per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said properties are legally described as plat of Paulson Homestead in the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter. And in the portion of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, lying west of South Dakota Highway fifty-two. In section fourteen, T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, and the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section fourteen, and the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section fifteen. All in Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM. Yankton County, South Dakota, nine one one address is four three one five nine, South Dakota Highway fifty-two in Yankton, South Dakota. All right, somebody here to speak on the rezone application. Come on up and state your name.
Hello, I'm Tim Paulson, four three one five nine, South Dakota Highway fifty-two. So we own approximately eighty acres north of the Gavin's Point entrance, west side of Highway fifty-two there. We're currently zoned as medium residential, looking to switch that to ag to match the past, present, and planned future use of the land. It was, since it was originally homesteaded by the Paulson family. And then in nineteen eighty-three, it became a certified tree farm through the South Dakota Tree Farm Association, as well as the American Tree Farm Association. And so it's been used for sawlogs and lumber, we have actus, active forest stewardship plan for the past forty years, and want to continue that you know, ongoing. And, you know, the land directly to the north of us is also ag. So it's not like we would be an island of ag. And the forty, fifty acres directly to the west of us is also certified tree farm. So, you know, that, that's our reasoning behind that, and I guess there's any questions or concerns? our reasoning behind that. And I guess there's any questions or concerns?
So you're going to get rid of the cedar trees? Is that it?
We're already working on that. Yeah, that's ongoing. That's part of our stewardship plan. If you look through that, it mentions it numerous times. That the cedar trees are an invasive species. They're killing off the hardwood species that we're trying to develop the oaks, the walnuts. You know, they make the valuable saw logs that we're looking for.
So what's your percentage of hardwood trees?
Percentage?
Yeah.
Well, out of the eighty acres, there's twenty-seven acres that is pretty much solid cedar trees right now. We currently are working with the NRCS doing a cost share program to remove out those cedar trees. And replant more hardwoods in the areas. And then, you know, we've been ongoing thinning and cleaning per forestry stewardship plan to, to continue the development of the desired hardwoods.
I, I wasn't sure from reading through whether you were going to replant seedlings or you're going to let itself pollinate.
Some of both. You know, there's current areas where there are no hardwoods to recede in those twenty-seven acres. So we will be replanting with the basically bare root seedlings. But there's other areas where natural regrowth has been occurring and is expected to continue to occur.
And I guess currently you are doing this, it's like a full-time forestry operation?
It is not full-time. You know, I, it certainly can't pay the bills at this time. You know, hardwood forest is a long-term endeavor. So it takes, unlike row crops where you get a crop each and every year, you know, you're talking decades or hardwoods. So we are currently letting them grow. We did do a harvest about twenty years ago. Where we did bring in a portable sawmill, they love some lumber and, you know, we did have some sales from that as well.
So the expected future uses continue kind of like you are and just you want to match the use in the zoning district together?
Yep, exactly. You know, it seemed like the county had been making an effort over the past year to kind of make each move towards matching the zoning to what the actual use of that land is. So we thought it was a good time to maybe get this rezoned, you know, as ag, which is what it's currently being used as. And also, you know, eliminate some of the restrictions that we've since found out that, you know, could be a problem with it being zoned as medium residential. And talking with Bill, I realized that, you know, the, like what we had done in the past is bringing in a portable sawmill is actually not allowed under medium residential, because that's considered processing. And so, you know, granted, we'd probably grandfathered in, but I'd just rather clear it up and get it rezoned as a
Have you heard any input from the neighboring properties?
There's three people contacted me. One was Lorenzans to the west and, you know, they're thinking of possibly doing something similar. Holds across the the highway said, you know, they had no issues with it. And then I believe Doug Coss is here. I'll let him speak for himself, but his main concern was, you know, would he still be able to develop his land in the future if ours was made A?
Very interested in your project. I think it's a great project. You talk about the, the types of hardwood, American elm, burrow, green ash, mulberry, walnut, Chinese elm. Hackberry, iron basswood. It's your business if you can harvest them and, and retail it out.
All right. Anybody else got any questions?
I have one for Bill.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Bill, on this property now, since it, since it is all right, right now is rezoned moderate density. And he wants to take it back to ag. So then he brought up the grandfather clause. But once it's been changed, do you lose that? The power of the grandfather clause because it was something else and now you're trying to go back. So then does he?
Well, it's been a tree farm, certified tree farm since that time. So some of that's grandfathered in, but he's just trying to eliminate any confusion that he can do what he needs to do without jumping through hoops. And Gary and I were talking about it, you know, when they, when they rezoned this, they just drew lines. If they would have actually looked at the use of that property, it probably should have stayed ag when they rezoned it.
Well, and I, I don't have a problem with it other than the fact that if the property next to it is moderate density and they have their own set of rules. And not saying that they will, but if they decide to put a you know, big sawmill in there and truck traffic and all that stuff, then does he? Is he under the thumb of the moderate density people that surround him? You know, like we talked about it in, in the ag districts with pig barns or whatever. Well, if your pig barn was there before they developed the land around you, you've just got to put up with it. But
Well, and the problem is, so he's grandfathered in, but what he's doing, he's not doing every year. There's and so there's a question as well, you know, the uses would say the same, but he hasn't done that for a long time. So that would be a question. We could probably ask state attorney, but he's just saying, let's you know, can we do this to make it?
Like I say, I don't have a problem with it, but my, my concern is that even though I'm in favor of changing that of what it, what the property is surrounding him in the moderate density, density area around him. What say they're going to have and what he could do because say, like you say, he only harvests the trees every five, 10 years, whatever, you know, to get your hardwood. But if you get a, a business that's going and people are wanting, you know, that product, there's trees on another property that can be sold that can be hauled down there to the sawmill.
Well, I think the sawmill is just for your property. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah. Yeah. And I, like I say, I go, I just, I'm trying to be a little bit of a devil advocate here about what's going to happen down the road five years. When more people build houses out around you, you know, want that view. And then, you know, then your, your hardwood business becomes real popular, like as in a lot of places. So that they don't end up putting restrictions on you by because you're next to them and they were there first. And, you know, other, I mean, when you change, when you change the zone from what it was to something new, does the grandfather's thing still hold? That's
Well, that's well, if we go to ag, he's allowed to do it. And so the need for the grandfather wouldn't be there. The way I understand it.
And he's under the ag zoning conditional use. It's a conditional use for portable processing plant.
Under aggies. Yeah. And that, that by zoning it back from moderate density back to ag.
You'd have to come in for a conditional use for the portable sawmill.
Use to put a mill up other than the fact that if he's been doing it. That might be the issue that's grandfathered.
What's the definition of, does that definition of portable processing?
Of course, all, all, all our neighbors were notified. Nobody objected.
Well, and, and yeah, and that's and I'm not objecting either, Don. I'm just trying to throw something out there that, you know, five years down the road, somebody goes, well, yeah, you can't do that because you weren't there before we were there.
I guess the portable processing.
Talked for years and years and years about the Paulson boys down there when he worked Pearson Ranch and they went squirrel hunting on the weekends and they put on big feeds and all that stuff. And they were, they were all big buddies, you know, back then. But
So
Things are different.
Portable processing plant, I guess mainly applies to gravel equipment.
We thought a sawmill, a portal sawmill just for a, he brings it in, does his harvest and cut up, and then it's gone, would be allowed in ag. It'd be just like somebody clearing out trees.
For us to me, it'd be kind of comparable to having a custom combine come in.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's there, does its job and then they leave. So we, we assumed it would be a permitted use under ag. We don't really see any issues with the neighbors. You know, they've got their agreement with the, is it federal?
State.
Yeah. And so they've got to follow their guidelines too. So
Yeah, I, I'm just not against it at all. It's just the fact of someplace, someplace down the road, and we all know what happens that you know, if somebody builds something there and all of a sudden there's saws running early in the morning or late at night and they're mad, you know, you know, then they start fishing for ways to get you shut down. So they're just, they're aware, but I have no problem with it.
Um, I guess I'm going to ask for any public comment on this topic. Come on up. Get something to add.
Hello, my name's Doug Coss, four three two two nine Whisper Creek Road, Yankton, South Dakota. Near.
Yep.
Okay. So I'm, my wife and I own the land just north of Tim's. So he has eighty acres on the horizon. They were to the north. We have one about seventy acres. The two forties less the houses along the road are ours. We bought the property, I think about twenty-two years ago. It was already planted with numerous parcels and lots and those types of things, but it was undeveloped at that point in time. We brought utilities in to develop everything if you choose to do it. But all we've done so far in twenty-two years is built a home there and we have balances pasture with horses and, and the like. As far in general terms, I have no issue with what Tim is doing with his property or he plans to do this property. He maintains it well, right? So what he does is keep it clean and organized and keeps cedar trees down and all those types of things. So he has value, I think, to this community versus anything else with it. My only request is I'm just looking for information, right? So if his property is, is reclassified to agriculture, would that limit me on my property at any point in time in the future for any conditional uses, any rezoning that we may want to go to residential or those types of things? Commission, hell, do that.
So his property being there wouldn't affect?
Your, your property right now is zone A, correct?
It is, but
Right.
You know, myself and future owner may want to have a rezoned residential or those types of things with anything affecting, affect our future choices. Would be limited or affected by the fact that that's changed.
And you did mention that your property has been plotted or
Yeah, there's, it's, yeah, there's several lots.
There are lots and stuff and that's all recorded. So technically there would be a lot of record even in ag zone and you wouldn't be affected. They would, you would, you know, you could sell that lot. Once it's, if it was allotted prior to zoning, then you should be able to sell a lot off in there to someone. And you shouldn't have to rezonate or anything. They should be able to
Right. But I, maybe those particular lots will be developed. But maybe we want to develop differently with different lots. Maybe the next owner wants to do something different with it. I'm just looking, I'm just asking, would we be limited to our future, future options in any way?
So it's currently zoned ag. So if you would change any of the, any of the recorded lots that are there now, they'd have to meet the ag zone requirements and it'd be twenty acres. So if you would want to do residential or anything that wasn't currently recorded, then you'd have to get it rezoned. I guess. So you have that property that's highlighted and the one directly west of it?
Correct. There's about seventy acres of it.
So
Share, can we share that common face? So it's all
So technically though, if those lots are already recorded, even though they're in an ag zone and someone wanted to build and they wanted a bigger lot, they could buy two of the lots that are already recorded.
You could, but you wouldn't be able to change the boundaries of those lots.
No.
Without rezoning.
Yeah. And they might have to come in for a, so conditional use of our variance if they wanted to build on a lot like between the two lots.
Sometimes if, if they're two non-conforming lots that are added together, they're oftentimes approved because you're making it more conforming. So they could actually buy two lots and combine them into one.
Right. But as far as going down the road, if you wanted to do any major changes to the lots of record, then yeah, you'd have to get rezoned and then I guess technically in our zoning ordinance, there's nothing saying that he couldn't rezonate his properties and really properties south of that would have any bearing on it.
Can I, can I understand? Can I understand your question for sure? You're, you're asking if the change in, in this and their property, it gonna affect future sale of your property if you choose?
Yeah. Well, yeah, or any future opportunities we would have with property would be myself with future owner, right? So here's an example, right? Maybe I need to resort residential to do the development I would want to do on. Is the fact that now that property south of me is ag, is that going to limit me on getting that zone as well? I need to get it zone to.
So I guess in the past, we don't like to make islands, I guess, out of different zoning districts, but technically by the zoning ordinance, no, it wouldn't have any bearing on it.
No. And the other thing, you know, I, I guess I kind of looked at it for Mr. Paulson, the fact that we can take it, you know, you can, we can recommend that goes back to an ag district, but twenty or thirty years from now, whether it stays in your family or however it, something changes or just different family members want to do something else with it, and then they want to develop it. And it can become something else. I mean, but they'd have to come in for a reason on that also.
So I guess you get down to the question, if I wanted to make changes, I understand what I can do with my property now. But if I wanted to make changes, right? Develop it differently, rezone it, those types of things. The fact that that I have no residential property bordering me anymore. It's not going to affect my request to change.
No, that shouldn't affect it. And actually going straight east of you, you have all the residential and really it would make sense if that was rezoned too. And then directly east of that is more residential. So it's not like it'd be that much different than the area. So I wouldn't see it affecting it.
So basically, we're coming down to the point where we can foresee no effect on what I potentially may do with that probably going to.
I guess I don't see anything that
I wouldn't think so because just like you just said, Chris, the, the property in the, you know, bounded by the yellow, you know, the outline that where the house is already there yet. I guess if somebody came in and wanted to, you wanted to rezonate to a residential district instead, well, you're joining a residential district to start with. So I don't think that that would be a
Well, you do have residential lots, even though there's only bag, there's small lots adjacent to you too. So it fits, if you can rezonate to moderate density, that would fit in with everything else that's in that section. But remember there's five county commissioners and they can change at any time. You never know what you're going to get, but it should
All right. And then the final thing to say, you know, get out of support team and wherever he wants to do his property, takes care of his property. And that's pretty much the news he has right now with it. So.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Anybody else want to speak on this topic? Now that I will close public comment. Anything else to add, Bill?
Well, it really doesn't. I was concerned when I first read through it about the spot zoning, not knowing that it was ag adjoining it to start with. So I was concerned when I first read through it about the spot zoning, not knowing that it was ag adjoining it to start with, so then it. It really, I mean, it's kind of, but it's not. A forty acre field out in the middle of nowhere that's surrounded by all residential developments. That they want to zone that. Like the one down on, but. But. Here is ag too. There's a lot of ag all the way around. I guess that. What's, what's the, the yellow, is that?
It's low density residential. So over here, it's, it's a lot of low density, but you also have moderate density down here. Anybody objecting to taking a piece or to write off of highway fifty-two and turning it into more. Modern density regardless of what this is zoned down here.
Right.
I guess the ag zone district fits his use better than.
What he wants to be able, want to do, yes.
I guess like comment was made earlier, it was. It's kind of an arbitrary line that was drawn across originally when zoning was enacted.
Yeah. That's how it was all done back then.
Sometimes through the middle of properties.
I'd make a motion to approve. The rezon. From moderate density to agricultural district. Basically for the reasons that we have talked about. It joins ag, ag. Land or ag districts to, that are north of it. What he's wanting to do limits what he can. Do in a moderate density zone. With his property that he has there. And I don't first, see that it's. In covering anybody. Else in the neighborhood, I mean, you know, one person was here to speak on it, but it was. Wasn't against it, just want to know where it put him in, you know, if it did do that. That's sort of my motion, Bill.
Repeat that, please.
Second. Sort of.
Sort of.
No, second for sure.
All right, I have a motion and a second. You can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, uh, we have some plats. First one is the Mormon plat of Mormons addition in the west half of the northeast quarter. Section twenty-seven, T ninety-five north, range fifty-six, fifty-five west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, Walshtown Township.
Red bill, this is an existing farmstead.
Yes. I can get to it, that would be a big package. So two brothers bought adjoining properties. There was a. Farmstead here, buildings that one of the brothers wanted, so we were able to survey this off. From the rest of the property. And that's an existing farmstead. Yes. And you'll notice now in the plats. With the section zoning administrator talks about section five thirteen. Being a farmstead. They'll have to be on any plots that want to use that section. Will verify.
Biggest problem with that plot though is if they do decide to build a house on there to meet the setback.
So it meets setbacks.
Their requirements from, especially the road.
And he just wanted it for the buildings, there were some hard buildings there, he just wanted to be able to use those buildings. So I don't think there's any intention to build a residence there. How wide is it there at the? Lightest point there? By which? On the right. Uh, four hundred and nine from five.
Yeah, what line eight is, two hundred and thirty-eight. Maybe way to the left.
I think basically the idea was to try to take as little of this land as possible. For the farmstead, the buildings. And leave as much of this to be farmed. Nobody likes straight lines anymore.
Yeah. That's it, the pivot. I'd make a motion to approve based on the. What do you say? Five thirteen. Where it was here. Yep. That one.
All right, I have a motion. Have a second.
Second. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We can do a vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, next plat, list plat of lot A and lot B of Cody's addition in the north half of the southeast quarter. And the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-two. T ninety-five north, R fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota and central township. This is also a by section five thirteen plat. This is a farmstead. Won't sell that off to a family member. They have access off the road, they maintain their frontage on both sides.
Yeah, the straight line thing would be nice.
Surveyors don't like them either.
Well, no, and then. It doesn't really. The only issue. I don't think it shows on any of the maps, Bill. How that actually fits into that hundred and eighteen acres that's there. If that's the whole farmstead or just where the house sits.
Just where the house sits.
Yeah. And I think that's been a. To me anyway, it's been a question of when we created the farmstead rule. Then it became a deal where they didn't want to sell the whole farmstead, so then they sold just part of it off.
We, if you read the definition. So basically, this is the house right here. So it's coming in, it's going around this house.
Right.
And all of this stays with the ag property or the rest of the property for the animals. So there's two houses there? No, these are, these are all just. What's that one to the right there?
Machine.
To the right. This is the house.
That's the house.
What about to the right of that?
No, that isn't the house, that's the house, that's the house right down there.
So it's going to come right around here. Either side of the driveway for access, it's right around here. And back down the driveway, sorry about that. And then these buildings will remain.
So they share access.
Yes, most love access here to farm, yeah.
And I'm sure that the. Son doesn't have any use for the outside. Buildings because the dad and other brothers still. Farmer and have cattle and.
Yeah, the grandson is actually playing the house.
Yeah.
And the dad. Granddad, grandfather. I guess I don't see any issue with it.
No. Still in the family. Something that we need to do at some point, those units. Right through around what a farmstead definitely, the definition of the deal because. I remember the original in town, where it's. He sold the house and all the buildings.
And I asked that question, and the, the definition of farmstead. Doesn't really say that you have to use all the buildings.
Yeah.
And that's maybe something that needs to be addressed in the ordinance. You know, is there a minimum number of acreage? Do you have to include all buildings?
Yeah.
But that, that would have to be clarified in the ordinance.
There's two of them close to me, one not very far from this one, and another one where we approved it as a farmstead. And everything, and then the minute it got approved, the guy turned around and sold them just the house. And the shop and kept the rest of it and then sold that out again. Another one across the road, they didn't want, they wanted to keep the cattle shed for the pasture. Even though the cattle had to come up in the air to get water from the other guy. Needless to say, it's all fell down.
Well, I'll run that by the county commission and see how they want to. How they read it and how they want to handle it.
Yeah. But at this point, I make a motion to approve it. Based on the five thirteen, section five. Farmstead.
All right, I have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. We can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right. That takes us to the final public comment. Anybody wants to come up, give a public comment? Come on up, I'll give you three minutes.
Lou Johnson, Val, and I was, I missed the first part when Andrea got up and was explaining her situation. And. It kind of. Bugs me a little bit. There, the trailer house in question is sitting right on the property line. The roof is out into my sister's property. And. I guess I don't understand why it's got to take several months and nothing's done. The only thing they did do, they went out there and they put plastic snow fence over the rafters after the roof blew off. And by that time, that's like shutting a barn door after the horse is gone, the insulation and everything had blown all over the neighborhood. And. I just don't understand why. Some things. Are a terrible nuisance and other things, nah. We just let it slide and let it slide and let it slide and let it slide. Now, and so far, and don't get me wrong, the owner of the trailer house. Bought the property that it's sitting on for my dad forty years ago. About there, and we've gotten along fine. But enough's enough. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from the audience have any public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
I, I'd, I'd just like to make one comment. We're not supposed to. Provide responses to public comment. In the session. If you want it to get on the agenda. Go in and apply to be on the agenda and bring it up, then it can be discussed. I can't hear you.
All right. Unless there's anything else from anybody on board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those, we adjourned.